Again, when we realized that was an option several years ago, we set about to establish that program. And so, as mentioned, depending upon the level of investment made, again, it has to be within one of the six zones. Council will look at these projects on a case-by-case basis and decide whether or not they meet the criteria to be awarded these incentives. The type of incentives that are offered include property tax abatement, and this will be city-only. But city-only property tax abatement for the incremental value. It also can include, as proposed here, a waiver of building permit fees. So whether planning and zoning, plan review, building permit, that's all potentially included. Expedited permit review. And then finally, if there is a lien attached to a property, a city lien, the city has the ability to waive that lien. Again, just other kind of tools in the toolbox in order to try to make the project more attractive, again, with the idea that there's ultimately some redevelopment. So again, that's what we're seeing here.
My last question is, staff recommended to us at one point, this building was an imminent danger. Can somebody explain how it went from the recommendation to where we are at now? Because I think it needs to be clear that, you know, it kind of shifted grids and how we ended up being in a position where it was paused or it shifted.
Sure, so we received a structural engineer report, I believe it was Fitz and Shipman, and that was procured by the new owners. And he went in to assess the thing, the issues that the building once had, which was loose coping, potential of the second floor collapsing. And the other, the third escapes my mind right now. But within that report, he disclosed that all of that area has been demolished on the interior. And so, a lot of those issues no longer are present. They also re-secured the fencing all the way around, and they did remove that loose coping, which those were very large bricks. They're about like 30 pounds apiece. So that's a good thing that they removed those. But with that structural engineer report and with the secured fencing around it, we feel confident that they're going to move forward with their project. We've seen their plan, and it looks good. Yeah.
The building still is under a raise order, and there still is an active TRO to that effect, pending some other items that need to be addressed to bring the building up to full or some, but I don't want to use the word compliance, it would be whatever the proper term would be, but to get it to where staff feels comfortable reducing some of those restrictions, we'll bring it back to council to potentially consider lifting the raise order.
Okay, and the last thing, citizens came up here asking about abatements in neighborhoods versus, you know, some of the abatements we're giving to some of these buildings. Can someone kind of speak to the difference? Or do we have that and the why?
So, the empowerment zone, again, as I mentioned, it is, it's targeted abatements, economic incentives in six areas throughout the city that the city council identified as areas that we really wanted to focus redevelopment in. We do have that map posted on the website. Anyone who's interested, of course, we can definitely get them a copy of that map. Again, so if you were, if a developer were interested in, and I say developer, really, the empowerment zone can include something as, I don't want to say small, because it's significant for families, but a single-family home in that zone is eligible. And so, you know.
To make sure that was stated.
Absolutely, so we encourage if someone is considering building a new home in one of these zones to please reach out to us. Because we can, we can get those considered, present them to council, and then hopefully get some of these similar abatements. I will say that depending on the investment that, that affects, so you'll see, this one is proposed to be seven years or more because of the significant investment. It's estimated to be between four and six million. And so, we're recommending a much longer, so a seven-year abatement, whereas a single-family might be, or would be considerably less than that, maybe three years, so. And I will say that we are currently reviewing this policy because it has been, we've tweaked it a couple times over the years, but we're taking kind of a fresh look at it. So we may, we may make suggested changes. We'll bring that back to council here in the coming weeks. But to your point, yes, I mean, it's in those areas, we certainly encourage folks to, to reach out to us to take advantage of these incentives.
All right, now we have Councilman Williams, Councilwoman Sherwood.
Is the abatement attached to the $75,000 investment? Or is it attached to that 4.5 to 6? And I mean, I.
The 4.5.
Kind of guardrails are in place if that doesn't happen? Could you explain how they could fix the abatement?
Yeah, so if the abatement, if the project does not move forward, then that would essentially allow us to cancel the agreement. But the idea would be that if they don't make the investment, then the value's not going to go up, so the issue is kind of moot. And if, you know, if, for example, they came back and they didn't make quite that extensive, we could always revisit it and perhaps adjust it accordingly.
And is there like a roadmap in place with the timeline of when you, do we, do we check in with them periodically? Or is that set in stone?
Yeah, so it will stay in communication. And again, of course, with this particular property, we've been in communication with the prior owner and the current owner just because of the concerns for safety. But to your question, yes, I mean, there's their timeline, I believe is to begin third or fourth quarter of '25, and then perhaps be well underway or close to by mid-'26. So, so, but we do monitor that to answer your question.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
For a point of clarification, a constituent reached out to me and was under the assumption that somehow this was taxpayer dollars that were going to go towards assisting or aiding the reconstruction. This is not consistent of taxpayer dollars. This is not any use of taxpayer money. This is an abatement, which ultimately means there's no tax being taken or money being paid. If I can, I mean, I want to clarify this up because the city is not taking any tax dollars to aid.
Right, I think what we're saying was we're not writing a check. And so, when I, when I started my comments earlier, I said the state basically lists out different incentives that different cities can offer. You will hear in other cities where they may have a CDC or they may have an economic development corporation where they actually do write, quote-unquote, "write a check" for a project. What we're talking about here is simply, we're not going to write a check, the city. What we're saying is, for the potential increase in tax value that is the result of this investment. So in other words, maybe not this example, but let's use another example. Let's say a building is valued at $100,000. And if someone comes in and says, "Look, I'm going to invest $5 million in this project." We would bring that to the council like this. And council could say, "Okay, well, we like the project. We're going to abate the city taxes on this project for up to seven years." And so, let's say the value goes from 100,000 to value to 2 million. What we're talking about is simply abating that incremental value. So, we are essentially, quote-unquote, giving up potential future tax revenue, but we're not, we're not paying out any money.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Crenshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to build on that, I think the, some of the confusion has come from what maybe they're doing over in Orange. Orange is all over the news because they've just awarded a bunch of money to redo a shopping center, to add an HEB. And I think that money came from the Economic Development Corporation, and they gave $1 million to redo that, that center. So we're not giving any city tax dollars here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, also, do we know, and I don't need the exact number, but a ballpark, what the current Gilbert Building is on the tax rolls for?
$68,000.
$68,000?
It sounds about right, yes.
That's not the tax we're collecting? That's the value that it's on the tax rolls for?
The value, yes.
Okay, and so we will continue to collect the property taxes for that $68,000?
Yes, sir.
So all we're talking about here is abating or basically not charging them the city portion of property taxes for the improvement in the value from $68,000 up to possibly 6 million?
Yes, sir.
And if it goes below 4 million, they still get the abatement?
They would still get the abatement, but we may need to revisit.
Like how long it would be or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And then if it's greater than 6 million, could we come back and extend it longer?
It's maxed out currently at seven. But as I mentioned earlier, we are looking at maybe opening that back up, the policy. And let's say they might be able to take advantage of that. They could potentially bring it back.
Okay, so we're basically giving them the longest possible abatement we can under this plan?
Under the current policy, yes, sir.
Okay, great. And lastly, I would just make the comment, this is exactly the type of, you know, investment that we need for downtown Beaumont, in my opinion. Instead of, you know, borrowing money on taxpayer dime and, you know, trying to, the city to redo a building or to build a new building, this is exactly what we want. We want private industry to come in, take these older buildings, redo them, and bring back downtown Beaumont and make downtown Beaumont revitalized and prosperous once again, more so than, we've already seen some great improvements in our downtown of recent years. So I think this is a win-win. And again, we're not giving them any money. We're just giving them the city's portion of our property tax break for seven years on the improvements that they make to the land. And I think it's a, it's a great thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
So, Mr. Boone, have we done this in the past as far as how much this amount and for this, this long of a time, seven years? 100%?
I would have, it seems like we have, we haven't done many of them. It seems like we've done maybe one other of these larger ones. But I'd have, I'd have to get back with you on exactly.
In empowerment zones?
Yes, sir, in empowerment zones.
Okay, is that something that we normally do?
Yes, again, if, if we have that level of investment and they come to us, then we usually recommend them.
Okay, how much in tax dollars will we not collect over these seven years? Nothing plus nothing equals nothing.
I'm looking at Duncan, I'm looking at Duncan. Let me, let me.
Okay, so currently it's appraised at $55,385, which would have been anywhere from $685 to $700 in terms of what the city has paid. Remember, the city of Beaumont is .659. And while you're paying property taxes on the Port of Beaumont and BISD and other figures that go in it, we're just talking about abating the city of Beaumont, which is .659. So if it was to potentially be 4.5 million, you're looking at anywhere from 36, 4.5 million?
Times seven.
Times seven, exactly.
Three.
You know, that's why you don't clear a calculator when you walk up here. Divide by 100, times .659, yay, fun. So $30,000 in a given year. But you also have to understand that this new development is going to include what? Jobs, right? Because currently, this building has been a vacant building. So the economic impact in the neighborhood empowerment zone is not only is it in an area that has been identified as an area that the city should invest or wants to have that growth, but it's also a building that currently holds zero jobs and has been on the vacant building registry that's coming off of that vacant building registry once it's updated and operational.
Thank you.
Mayor, to answer your question, approximately 240,000 is what we're talking about over the seven-year period. And I will say that we've estimated, although it's an estimate, of the permit fee waiver approximately 32,000.
Okay, Councilman Durio?
You said that you've seen the plans, can, are they, does that include retail or is that residential? Or what else in those plans?
So far, it's office space and retail. I've not seen anything for residential.
Okay, and have our engineers been in it to look at it?
As far as mollying?
I mean, is people like Bowen, yeah, not Fitz and Shipman?
Yeah, Boyd and Meyer, building official, has been involved. But mostly, it's just to talk to codes and whatnot and go over that with them so that they're prepared once they are ready to, well, once they've procured the property, which they've done, they seek these incentives that they're ready to go.
So this, the property owners did stick a new TRO after the building sold, and that hearing was last week. And during that time, they did present their, their engineering report to staff, and staff did walk the property with them prior and after the hearing to address some concerns, and the court did grant to extend the TRO on behalf of the new owners.
And the reason I'm asking all these questions is because with the history of this building and everything that it's been through, as far as the past owner and things, I'm getting phone calls and, and folks basically say it doesn't pass the smell test. They, they saying it, it just doesn't, it's not a good look. That's what, and that's just what some of the citizens that I've talked to have said, just because of the history of this building. So that's why I wanted clarity, get everything out in the open. Glad that, you know, we're not paying any tax money. We are losing some, but I guess if they go through with their plan, we'll get a lot more back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner, then Councilman Hilliard.
Just a point of clarity, the city of Beaumont, we don't have an EDC like Port Arthur, Orange, and other cities. They have a Type A, Type B. So for me, it's already understood and established we don't have these incentives. Like for staff, how, 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 I don't want to confuse people about what we can offer. So how is it out there that we're doing something that we don't offer or we don't have?
So I think that's an important question and an important point because we, we mentioned earlier that you have some other surrounding cities that are, or their CDCs are actively putting equity money into a project. And so, the next question from the citizen's point of view is, well, why doesn't the city of Beaumont do the same thing? But as I mentioned, the state regulates a lot of economic development, in fact, all of it, for cities in terms of what we can and can't do. In order to have a CDC to do some of the things like we might see in Orange or Port Arthur, some of these other cities, you have to be what's called a 4A or 4B corporation. And in order to, to become one of those or create one of those and assess funds for it is done through a sales tax, but, sales tax, but that has to be approved by the voters. And my understanding is, back in the 1980s, the question was presented to the voters, and the voters declined it. And so, as a result, Beaumont does, does not have a 4A and 4B corporation. So that's why, and I think it's important to point out because as we see some of these, these projects in surrounding communities that might be, that's a legitimate question to say, "Well, why doesn't, you know, Beaumont do that?" And that's, again, one of the reasons why we did this empowerment zone is because it's, it's not as extensive as, say, a 4A or 4B corporation, but it's something we can do within the confines of the law.
Yeah, my struggle, I just don't want to cloud the trust of how we can govern within the rules that we actually have in the city of Beaumont. Because I got phone calls today too about, you know, us giving money. And I, I say, "There's no way possible we can do that because we don't have an EDC in Beaumont."
Right, we're deferring potential revenue. But for a, but for a redevelopment project, it wouldn't be there anyway. In fact, we expect, not only would the value continue to decline, but very realistically, the city might have to invest in demolition. So, again, but for the project, we're really just deferring potential revenue.
Understood.
Councilman Hilliard?
You know, I think one of the things that's not been mentioned is the amount of sales tax revenue that the city will, will get from this potential. Not to mention, this could be a stepping stone because you bring more people in into a larger office space, more, more chances of restaurants or other retail items coming to downtown because of the foot traffic that'll be there. So, you know, I, I realize that it seems like a lot, but, I mean, do we have a number on how much potential sales tax could be, also be collected?
Well, so they're estimating, potentially, they could have up to 80 individuals working in that building. And so, you can imagine a certain portion of those folks are going to be shopping downtown, visiting local restaurants. But you're right, those dollars will turn again and again.
Right, thank you.
Councilman Crenshaw, then Councilman Durio.
One other point I wanted to make, now it's slipped my mind. The, oh, you mentioned, can the port and the county be part of the empowerment zone? Better question, are they part of the empowerment?
Short answer is no. The port and the county, you know, they typically, they're, they're involved along with the city when it falls within our city or ETJ, but more involved in a reinvestment zone-type tax abatement for an industrial property. But I would have to check to see if they're, they're able to. My, my initial thought is they're not, but I, but.
I, I mention it because the, the port is asking us to abate city taxes on a port project. And if the port has the ability to abate their taxes on this building project, I would think that that would be a nice thing for them to do. And so, if it is possible, and if the, the building investor could, could please reach out to the port and the county, I think that it might also make the, the project more successful. And those two entities should 100% be willing to do that and help us revitalize downtown Beaumont, especially considering the proximity that the port has to this building. And anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Durio.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Do you know if they have any applicants for rental space yet? Or is it too early in the process to be getting that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Do you have any people interested in renting space in the building yet, or is it too early to know that?
I'm, I'm not aware at this time. Ms. Lowkey, do you have any idea?
First off, I just wanted to let you know that the applicant's wife is here, Leanne is here. And, you know, something important about who the two applicants are is they're current business owners in Beaumont. And it's really exciting because this is just also a business retention and expansion. It's exciting to see these two businesses try to salvage this building. And Tina, if you're able to look at your email, I actually sent a picture just because I want everyone to understand it's completely cleared out. There is nothing inside this building. There's no floors. If you're standing at the very bottom and you're looking at the top, you see the ceiling because it's been completely gutted. And so, we're not talking about this vibrant, you know, four-story building that has, is ready for somebody to come in and make a whole, a lot of money. We're talking about a building barely, you know, standing. And so, I think it's really important to understand that these people are putting in an investment into downtown. And so, currently, the first floor is going to be a potential partnership for a retail space. I'm not going to give too much information because she's here, and this is why people don't tell you things. But that's the relationship we've built. So the first two floors are going to be commercial with a lot of office space as well as conference space. And then the first floor, she has some really cool ideas on ways in which to allow for not just vendors, but opportunities for possibly like flower shops and food, and maybe even a little wine bar. So really, she is not just adamant about salvaging the building and the historic significance, but more importantly, to draw more people downtown, to spend money downtown and to save downtown. And that is honestly what the goal of her, her husband, as well as Robin Chris, because their goal is to help be a part of the solution downtown.
Thank you. So that, you said next, 2026?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for showing them this, but I think for everyone who's thinking that they're getting ahead on this, I just really think it's important that you see the interior of this building. This is exactly, this picture was taken maybe five days ago. And, you know, if you want, why don't you go to, can you show them the next picture too? Let's just highlight this. She's getting mad at me. All right, there's the three Beaumont citizens who not only pay sales tax in their own businesses, but they also pay property taxes of where they live. And they're, you know, getting their hands and feet wet in a, in a building that has nothing. So we're really excited for this opportunity. This is a huge encouragement for the steps we're taking towards the downtown vacant building registry as well as the neighborhood empowerment zones. And so, if you look in the council packet, you're going to see the full policy that's in there that outlines every single amount and what the abatement is. And it also includes all six of the zones that are discussed.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I didn't finish asking my question. Thank you, Christina. Demi, that, you said a spring of '26, what is that? Is that the start date?
No, so in their application, it says 12 months, 12 to 18 months. So I believe in.
Start to finish?
Yeah, I believe that Mr. Boone had said in court, quarter four of this year, they're going to start the dry-in. And then by next year, hopefully, they'll be completed, or it would be probably beginning of 2027, maybe spring of 2027, realistically, considering some delays, if there's any weather.
And one other question for Mr. Boone, this, the seven-year 100% number, was that something that the, the owners of the building requested? Or is that something that we just offered?
So the guidelines that go along with the program, that's the maximum, is seven. As mentioned, we're, we're looking at that. We may ask for y'all to consider adjusting it. But, but to answer your question, it, it's what they're seeking because it's the maximum allowable term under the, under the guidelines.
Do we think about offering something of lower, less years and a lower percentage?
Well, it's 100% at seven years.
No, but did we think about offering less years and 75%?
So the way it's structured, and again, we're going to take another look at it here soon. So we, we might have some similar thing. But the way, the way the policy is written now is basically the term, 100% across the board, but the term is based on the amount of investment. So yes, we could look at, you know, perhaps a million dollars investment might get you five years instead of seven. But again, we'll, we're going to plan to bring y'all something here pretty soon.
So this is not, it's not a random number? Y'all have a formula for figuring this out?
Yes, sir, in the guidelines.
All right, thank you.
And it is on the website as well. And there is a reminder just that if the city was to tear down this building.
$400,000?
$400,000, so it would be a negative cost to the city. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Gap Strategies for bond election services. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for approval?
Who to approve?
Is there a second?
A second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hilliard?
I have a quick question. On this, paying them $100,000, is this, I believe, I believe wholeheartedly in Tracy and her department to be able to, and along with the council, to be able to work this lot without having to spend $100,000. We have all the material, we have the quality people that work for us. I, I don't understand why we, we, we feel we need to spend $100,000 to get them to go with us. I think that we'll all be together. And I have a lot of faith in our communications department. They always do a wonderful job. And so, I don't understand why we don't, we don't let them show, all of us and communications shoulder the burden and not spend $100,000.
Assistant City Manager?
Thank you, Councilman. We wanted them to continue their work on the bond propositions. They were very instrumental in the Beaumont Bond Advisory Committee helping to get the package before council last month, getting it approved for an election in November. They're very knowledgeable and have the expertise with bond propositions as well as with Beaumont's proposition. So, so we felt it would be useful for them to continue their services to the city, especially since the city of Beaumont hadn't had a bond election in over 42 years. We thought their services could assist and support our communications department.
Councilman Turner? Thank you, Councilman Hilliard.
One of my reasons for a second in this is to actually, well, we can have discussion. I feel confident just as much as Councilman Hilliard does, but one thing I have learned, I don't want to speak for staff. I need y'all to speak to us and let us know the why. So what I'm asking is, it's on here as a recommendation of approval. For me, I need to get a clear understanding of the why. For me, I need to get a clear understanding of the why. I know I don't want to put it on communications and say we feel they can handle it. I'd rather communications open up and be honest with us on where they, if it's okay with you, Mr. Williams, on the why. So we have a clear understanding on why, and we're all on the same page.
Oh, she's already up there, so I guess that was okay.
Well, thank you for your vote of confidence, and and could we do it without them? Yes. Will they make us better? Probably so. They have the expertise that I've never done, I've never helped to market a a bond, obviously a geo bond. We have, I had one in forty-three years, so there's a lot of things that it's outside of my wheelhouse, so to speak. Can I get a message across? Right, I can, I believe. But the expertise, so they they're specialized in some things, there's certain guardrails, there's legal guardrails with a geo bond, uh best practices for presenting information, advocacy, that types of thing that could get us into some legal trouble. So I have used them as consultants with everything that I've marketed, everything that I put out with graphics, with the videos, the even the questions that we ask when I've been doing videos with each of our um our directors that have something on the bond. There's even a way to ask the questions, there are certain things they can say and they can't say that can get us into legal trouble. So I've used them greatly on that. Bandwidth, again, we have three people in our communications department, and this this really could be a full-time thing for somebody to get the message out. Just this last time period, I worked thirteen hours over doing bond election materials, getting information to our directors on how to answer certain questions, getting them information, because Gap has been there the entire time, and our directors do a great job, and they know a lot about what's on there. Do they know everything, and if they know how we got to where we are? No. And uh do they know the certain ramifications if they answer a certain way? If they even say, go vote, that could get us into trouble. So there are certain things, and um I've been trying to get them that information as well as graphics, and then we're doing videos for each proposition. It's time-consuming, super time-consuming. So for the bandwidth part, we could use them. We're planning to do several pop-up events where we give out information to people going to festivals such as Viva Fest, Oktoberfest, to give out information. We want to make it to all the neighborhood association meetings, and I've asked the directors to sign up for some of those. But and then the four uh different wards, we're going to each ward. Of course, we want all of our staff to be there, but it's just difficult. And then we have a town hall and then a virtual town hall, so they can be very beneficial there. They have big boards that they print out that explain everything. They want to help us um with social answering questions right away. That's a full-time job, just on social, just to answer people's questions as they have those and come in. So there's a lot of things that they can do. Do we need the whole scope? Maybe it could be pared down in certain areas. Um, that's for y'all to decide. Could I use it? Yes. Could I do it without? Yes, it just may be a lot uh smaller scale. So like again, we have our full-time jobs that we're doing as department heads already, so it's a lot to take on. It really could be a full-time job, and they have the expertise. They've been super successful. If you look at their track record, they've done this multiple times in other cities and and been very successful. It's a two-hundred-and-sixty-four-million-dollar bond that I don't want to be on my shoulders for dropping the ball somewhere. And again, this can, the revenue or what we pay them can be rolled into the bond, and I want to say it's like one-thirtieth of one percent of what it would be for the over um all cost of the bond compared to what we pay them. So those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm still going.
You got one more?
All right.
Then we got Councilman Williams and Councilman.
I'm sorry, man, this is just too important. I'm not really trying to rush through this. I really want to get into it so we can be open and honest about where we're at and why, because my original thought was no when I seen it. And then I had to think about it again with experience. I can't speak for staff. I gotta let them speak for themselves. So that's why I thought it was important for staff to be able to come to the mic and express why, because originally that's where I was at, not because I discredited Gap, it's because I am that confident in our staff as well as us as a council. But I do understand this, if we're sending you emails about a pothole, we're sending you emails about something going on in the city, and we ask you to manage the bond at the same time, I do understand after you say what you stated earlier, we we have to be realistic about what we actually ought to accomplish and do. So I want to know if y'all were confident before I spoke for you and forced it on you. That's why I asked the question I asked.
Got it.
All right, Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I've got, I guess, two questions. You know, whenever the former council entered into an agreement with Gap Strategies, was there no talk of extending their services until election day? I mean, did we know that their services ended, and when did they? And when did the money we already paid them kind of lapse and pick up? And I guess part two is, um, you know, it's not our job to advocate for against illegal, is my understanding. And so um this is essentially a a hundred thousand dollar, seven-week educational process, and that just, in marketing terms, seems expensive to me. I mean, I've done some advertising, I mean, not with Gap, with local uh marketing folks, and and that just seems like a lot of money.
Yes, Councilmember, to answer your first question, the original contract was through the end of through through August, actually. Their their scope was to present a package to council and the recommendations of the bond of the Beaumont Advisory Committee, which is what they did. They held various meetings with the advisory committee. They brought the advisory committee's recommendation to council. And they saw everything through counsel's uh vote to either call an election or not call an election. So that's, that was the extent of their original contract and.
But surely they were under the impression that an election was going to be called. I mean, surely they weren't thinking, well, we're not going to charge more money because we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, they were hired, a committee was formed, they were educated through information that's publicly available to to us now, to to citizens. And so that's where I, I mean, struggle as someone sitting here and a citizen. I I just, um, I I'm curious, what does that hundred thousand dollars do? Is it graphics? Is it sponsored Facebook post? We're all going to be expected to go to town halls, and I'm not complaining about that. I'm willing to do that. That's why I ran. I'm willing to educate people. So, you know, I I want to know what a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars gets me because um I I struggle with with these consultant fees. I I I do. I I did it once already, and uh I I I'm struggling with this one because I don't know um what that gets gets us.
If I could ask Ms. White over there to scroll up or down to the scope and fee worksheet. Well, maybe, oh, you don't have it. So there are various tasks that are part of uh the ninety-eight thousand. One is messaging, project kickoff and coordination. Task two is direct mail, uh production of two direct mail pieces and other mailing services. Task three, website, social media and digital communications. Task four, open house, speakers bureau, pop-up events. Task five, rapid response and media relations. And then there are associated project expenses, which include printing and mailing of direct mail, website hosting and content management fees, printing and video expenses for other open house events, travel and lodging. So I don't know if you have this page in your packet or not, but it was, it's part of the contract or the proposed contract.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think Tracy kind of alluded to what my question is, um, more or less, what do we actually need? What can you not task inside? And can we pare that down to something that's more palatable for the council? Well, I think we're struggling with the ninety-eight thousand. I I imagine we could maybe come up with a number that we're comfortable with, then we can work backwards from that. What can you do for us inside of this amount? Maybe as a council, um, I know we're going to go into executive session, we can come up with a number, maybe present it back and say, hey.
No, that's not a posted item for executive session.
Well, nevertheless, we need to get down to what we're comfortable with spending. And I guess can we move to approve a different amount here today?
Yep, publicly.
Okay, perfect. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and and one thing that I do want to note, their original proposal was higher than this amount. We staff did ask them to come down to a lower amount, which is how they got to the ninety-eight thousand. But initially, it was, there there were more task uh items uh that they cut out of their proposal.
Thank you. Councilman Crenshaw?
I had some reservations about this item before I came in here, and now after having uh heard some of the explanations by city staff, I I'm even more uh concerned. Before I get into what exactly is a rapid response for a bond education initiative, why on God's green earth would we pay a group from Austin to come in for travel and lodging when we could find a local marketing PR firm, advertising firm, to help us and save us that cost? So uh I I just, I I think this is just a a shocking example of wasteful spending. I think that we should have put this out for a bid for a local group, uh and we could have saved money there. I just, I think a hundred thousand dollars to educate earlier, uh with all due respect to Tracy, she called it, we're trying to market a bond. I don't know if that's proper to market a bond. We're trying to uh educate the public on a bond. And uh I just feel like this is all something that should have been discussed with the original proposal when we hired this group. It should have been contemplated that it was going to come up. It seems like the selection, I mean, is just around the corner. I don't understand why we can't go over to Triangle Blueprint and print some educational cards and stuff them in our water bills and mail them to people and save a lot of money by educating them, by just putting a flyer in the water bills going out for uh September and October. And we probably should have thought about this months ago so that we could have been putting these educational flyers out on water bills well before now, because we're probably getting down to where there's only going to be one water bill going out uh between now and the election. So um I don't know, it's just, it, this seems very poorly done. And uh with all due respect to staff, I'm not trying to make more work for you all, but we have a large uh city staff. I I think the other day that we have thirteen hundred employees uh for the city. And I just feel like between communications, convention, convention and visitors bureau, economic development, you know, which has pushed so many of these aspects, aspects of this bond so hard, I feel like uh this should be a team effort with staff, and we ought to be able to educate voters appropriately with city staff and not spend another hundred thousand dollars, especially considering our current financial situation.
To clarify, not not advocating for the bond, marketing meaning just getting materials out and getting information out.
I'm just using your exact word. You said market a bond.
Right, and marketing meaning getting materials out and getting information out.
Okay, yeah.
But um, one thing I would just say to that, and we do have a lot of employees, how many of them are knowledgeable about the bond? Not that many, like that can really speak to it. The benefit of using them is they've been from the very beginning. They can tell us how we got to where we are, and they understand the ins and outs of every part of the bond. And I mean, it's for y'all to decide. I just want you to know that most of our staff, if you were to ask them, tell me why um this was put on the bond, tell me, tell me what's needed at the police station. They probably couldn't even tell you that. So to have just, I mean, they could tell you some things, right? Because they may have seen it in the media, but would they get it all correct? Maybe, maybe not, and I feel like uh we need somebody who has that knowledge and that expertise. Even when they ask me questions, like there's sometimes I have to text and say, is this correct? Was this the exact amount that was, and there's a lot in there. It's it's a big bond, and there's a lot of information. I just want to make sure that it has to be clear, and it has to be transparent, and it has to be correct information. So not every staff member could speak to what's on the bond and why they feel like it's necessary, but you make some good points.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I'm not um gonna go as far as Cory, uh Councilman Crenshaw went, but I will say that there's enough misinformation to need some help. I can agree with you on that. And there's enough uh communication out there that could potentially affect the bomb one way or another. So we we need to make sure that we're getting it right, so I agree with you on that. And we need to make sure that nobody on this council has done this before, right? And nobody probably in this room has done this before because it's four to three years. So I can see the need to have some correct guided uh information coming out, not just because we think we can. Most of us are new on council, so we're going to be honest. I'm just, I'm concerned about what the actual real need is. And if there are things that, I mean, we are getting down to the wire, so we need the brass tacks. We need to know what we need because we're we're down to the wire. But we definitely need some help. How how do we get there is the most important problem. We're we're worried about creating solutions and making sure that we're knowledgeable and we're articulate and we're thoughtful in our processes with staff and everybody. So, I mean, I just kind of want to know, how can we help realistically in in crunch time? And control the narrative in a way that's beneficial to the entire city of Beaumont.
Correct. And initially, as we were, as um Mr. Ellis pointed out, was, I think, they, the first proposal was around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something like that, and they pared it down to ninety-eight. They said that it's not just a fee, there's expenses for like printing, mailing, the boards, the expenses for travel and all that. But there are, I mean, you can see it there, those are the different fees for the different parts of it. I would see as consultants, that would be my number one ask, is to be able to use them for, to run everything that we have through them for the legality uh part. And it would be beneficial to have them at our open houses and for our virtual meeting. There's just a lot. I don't know, whatever you guys decide, but.
And I do want to address, it's been asked if we expected them to continue, and we didn't. It was a presentation, and we wanted to see how that would go. None of us had experience with doing bonds and certainly uh getting familiar with Gap. And we were able to uh see how that went. And uh and I feel like, you know, with their knowledge, they're bringing the experience that we need because of our staff is, you know, when we add new projects, we're not adding people. And yet we're needing to make sure we're effective in getting the word out and getting it out correctly, because there have been communities that have had problems getting it out incorrectly. Councilman Williams?
I just, I mean, I'd look at this, and and the largest expense is is to open house. And and I hear Tracy say that, you know, it'd be beneficial to have them there, but I just, whenever people have concerns, they're not calling the guy from Gap Strategies, they're they're calling up. I mean, who do they, they trust, I mean, and I just look at it and go, there's seven people up here who are elected. I mean, who better to educate somebody um for free? So I, that's and it's not that I'm saying I distrust them, I'm just going, people that want education aren't picking up the phone and saying, let me call Gap Strategies. They're picking up the phone and saying, I'm going to call Councilman Turner. And um, you know, I I I went to one of these educational deals that Sterling proved a few weeks ago, and and I know several of us did, and and um, you know, this is why we were elected. And so if if my time can save a hundred thousand dollars, then then I'm I'm willing to step up and do that. And and maybe, you know, maybe some people agree that that they can do a better job, but um I disagree. I I I think people trust us, not um a firm from from anywhere, even if they were local. I I just, I, they're they're not calling the marketing company, they're calling their elected official.
Thank you. Councilman Hilliard?
Now, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, you said this money will be rolled into the bond?
No, the funds uh can be reimbursed from the bond proceeds.
Okay.
Once the bonds are sold.
Okay, and and you know, I'll echo it. I I feel the same way. I mean, we're, I think it's, I think it's a huge waste of money to uh to do it. We already have all the materials. I I went to some of those proposals, and I mean, all the material's already been printed. All the slideshows have been done, so I don't know what extra stuff they would need to bring that hasn't already been printed or or made. Does that belong to us now since we paid them, or do they take that with them?
Does that belong to us now since we paid them or do they take that with them?
So what has been decided by council? We have all that information. We would need to change some things like branding and stuff, probably. Their website may not be available any longer, I'm not sure about that, the beaumontbonds.com.
So everything ends in August. All the money we've paid them in August, the job's done.
Yeah, we've paid them up through the end of their contract.
And so that's it? We lose, so even all the money we've paid, we lose, we'll lose access to the website and?
No.
No?
Websites, I believe is ours.
Okay.
I believe at this point it might be time to, Mr. City Manager hadn't spoken, then we can call the question.
Just a couple of notes, Mayor. You know, council can do as you wish, that's what I'm always saying, you can do that. But a few things, will this save money? Yes, it will save you money. Will you, if we do it in-house, will it provide familiarity with people here? Yes, it will provide familiarity. But I think you've heard some things on why it's a challenge for staff. Staff's telling you now, it's a challenge for staff, okay? So later on, when something doesn't go right, they'll say, well, staff, what happened? Because they're telling you, they don't have the capability to do this right now. They've told you about the legal restrictions, they don't feel comfortable going out there representing us legally with these things, with these parameters on this type of election. They've talked about the limitation in forty-three years and nobody here's done this before. Nobody's done it in forty-three years. But, you know, it's reimbursable. So this is not money out of our tax dollars we are spending now. This is reimbursable. If any part of that bond passes, this is paid for out of that. So this is not paid for out of your dollars as you speak. Do you want it to be successful? That depends on how much effort you put into it. So if you want it to be successful, you'll put more effort into it. If you don't, we don't, we'll do what you want. But I think the biggest reason we should consider this, it provides an unbiased perspective on this bond. My staff is already getting accused of being biased in this bond election. And this brings in a third party to give an unbiased view of everything that's being presented to this city. And if we continue with staff getting put before you and getting accused of being biased, accused of doing things with projects, that's no good for this city, that's no good for anybody. We don't need that argument out there. It's a small price to pay for unity of this community and city people being accused of being biased on this election. It's totally, now this group offers a thirty thousand foot perspective, they can't offer that thirty thousand, they've seen it before. We think we've done it. Now council can do as it pleases, but don't comment my staff later about being biased in this election when we had the opportunity to let somebody else do it.
That's, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that, I think we're at a point where we can call the question. All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
All right, motion passes. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Thank you, Mayor. Council could have considered a request for a specific use permit to allow a retail liquor store within a GC MD two, general commercial, multiple family dwelling, two district for property located at forty-five fifteen North Major Drive, Suite A. And it was approved at a joint public hearing. No, it wasn't.
It was a tie vote.
So for this to, and I've been told this, for this to pass, it would take a supermajority.
Okay, is there a motion for item number seven?
I want to recuse myself from this.
Is there a motion for item number seven? Is there a second? If there's no second, it'll die for lack of a second. All right, motion dies for a lack of the second.
Mayor, a question. Since it was presented to council as being a tie and it dies for a lack of a second, what happens now?
There's, unless there was a reason to bring it back, it's...
So this went to Planning Commission at the last meeting that we had and it reached a tie vote. Really, the Planning Commission is a recommendation to this board. So the ultimately approval or denial would come from the council. So Planning Commission is a recommendation.
So the dying for lack of a second is a denial?
I'll have to defer.
Effectively, yes, and so they have some other due process issues that they can pursue in the matter of legal.
Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration and Texas Department of Transportation to receive operating assistance funds for the Beaumont zip.
Public hearing is open? We don't have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Would we, well, with, public hearing is now closed and, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and execute a contract with the Federal Transit Administration and the Texas Department of Transportation to receive operating assistance funds for the Beaumont zip. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Motion we approve?
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to move into council member comments. Councilman Crenshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick observation, the contractor, Molly, on the Crow Road project, I just would like to say that I think they're doing an excellent job. That is on my route to Rayo's in the morning. And they have great signage to let motorists know that lanes are closed or lanes have changed direction. They have great barricades and their crew is always very busy and everyone looks like they're working when I drive by. So I'm not sure who the contractor is and what city they're from, but they do a great job. And when you talk to them, please give them my best and let them know that I'm the weird guy driving by taking pictures of them every day.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Sherwood.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Nothing today.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to announce, Ms. Bobby Patterson with the Hundred Black Women, they have their first phase one form of voter registration coming up in September. So if we can kind of follow the Hundred Black Women and see what they have going on, because they do a lot of awesome things in this community. Secondly, just wanted to kind of make a statement, you know, when we, as council members, have to make decisions, sometimes our decisions we make won't make everybody happy. But one thing I do agree with is we can't task staff with doing something when we, as a council, are attacking some of the same things we're asking staff to do. I don't think that's right and I don't support that. That's why I felt it was very important to ask staff, could they handle it prior to making the decision on, where I feel personally. So that's, I just wanted to kind of put that out there and let it be known. And it's important that accurate information is out there because a lot of people are confused and we got to make sure we put our accurate, factual, truthful information. That's not okay that we put out that kind of information because you confuse the community and people don't understand what's really going on. So that's my stance and that's where I'm at. I want to make sure we can continue to be accurate and as factual as we can be because I think the city of Beaumont deserves that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
Well, this will probably be the first time I go on record agreeing with Mike Getz, but I believe the bandit signs are something that we really need to address because it does get out of hand and it causes a lot of confusion, especially where they're placed. So I would like us to visit, you know, issuing citations or fines. I mean, it's obvious a way of revenue for us. So, you know, I'm always looking for ways to make money. The homelessness, we've really got to come together and we've got to come up with a way to address the homelessness. You know, I get calls, I know Corey gets calls, Mike gets calls, AJ, Madonna, Chris, we all are getting calls about how they're impeding businesses, actual tax paying, property paying, citizens of our city. And so it's something we really need to address. And there again, here I go with Mike again, but the lights, we really, can we do something about trying to get our lights synchronized, especially over there on Calder where they took out the Maury Myers Bridge and now we've got the lights there? And I saw that Tech Stop had come back and said those are our responsibility. And I would like to see those in, to work in conjunction with each other because it's quite a feat at five o'clock. And Demi, I wanted to ask, where are we on our committee for the planning zoning?
I've been reaching out to some citizens that I believe would be qualified members to be a part of that. And then I was going to loop back with administration to get with you guys on who you'd like to be appointed. So hopefully towards the end of September, beginning of October, we'll be able to have something for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Durio?
Just to follow up on Councilman Turner's statement, the Operation One Vote will have the National Voter Registration Day. It's their thirteenth anniversary celebration. It'll be Tuesday, September the sixteenth. It'll be at the jury and paneling room in Jefferson County Courthouse from eleven to twelve thirty. I believe, Mayor, we have a proclamation forum or something like that, at least that's what I was told. And they said you were going to be there to read it. Also, Molly, I'm going to need, I get quite a few calls about the sidewalk on Fennet Road, some of them blocking businesses, blocking driveways when they're tearing up the street. I had this one gentleman got an email today, he's right across the street from Beaumont United High School, said he's unable to access his business. So if we could look at, also, because I thought, I thought that sidewalk was going to be finished before school started, was I wrong?
The part of the sidewalk in front of the school was going to be finished in time for school. The work, well, there is a sewer repair that revealed itself that needs to be repaired. There was also a storm sewer issue. So we will be presenting a change order to council at the next meeting to perform those repairs to the storm and sanitary system. Then once that is complete, we can finish that last portion of the sidewalk.
That's what the delay is due to?
That's where that, where that gap is, that's what that's about.
So, and when it was doing both sides, part of the original plan, I thought it was just the side on the Fennet Road that passes in front of, that's directly in front of the high school?
We're doing that entire side of Fennet Road from Fourth Street to the library and then we're doing the crosswalks at the streets to help the pedestrians get across Fennet Road. So that's, that was the rest of it, but we're not going, and we're doing repairs and connections on the other side of Fennet Road as well. Yeah, so there's work on both sides.
Do you have the information for, about the business owner or you want me?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, we've been in coordination with him, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Public Works?
Actually, we hear you about the traffic signals and we are engaging with a consultant to perform a full inventory of our traffic signals. And that is not just going by and counting how many traffic lights, but actually going into the cabinets and inventorying all of the equipment that's inside. We've been using Tech Stop funding, Tech Stop projects to bring the adaptive signaling to major roads in Beaumont. Unfortunately, it is an agonizingly slow process. And because it takes so long, some of the equipment then becomes obsolete. So this inventory is going to be a first step to be able to have our signals talk to each other and synchronize them as much, as much as we can throughout the city. So that is a work in progress. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Boone?
Nothing, Mayor.
Assistant City Manager Ellis?
Nothing, Mayor.
No comment.
Nothing.
All right.
Two things, two things, Mayor. I'd like to thank the council members who've given me feedback on the budget, on the draft budget. I really appreciate that feedback. We still have two weeks to go, so we're still working on that document, so it's not a completed document. I've heard what some of your concerns are. We will be looking at addressing those concerns. So thank you for that feedback. And again, we have two weeks to go and we, and expect the document to be edited a bit, but when it comes back to you for approval, for some considerations there. On homelessness, I think we have a meeting tomorrow, Chris, the homeless task force, it's certainly one of the most important issues in Beaumont, Texas, but not just Beaumont, Texas and our country homelessness is. So we're taking it very seriously. We're, again, we talked, we're going to set up a workshop with council to discuss homelessness. And, you know, now, I'll just leave it at that and you'll hear some more before the day's out. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that, we are now in recess to executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming.